It intrigues me because it's easy to just throw money away.
Yes.
But to shop responsibly and to find a use for something that otherwise would go unused and maybe even tossed out, that's a smart thing to do in this green world of ours.
Yes, it is a very smart thing to do and many smart women shop that way. They really do. And I sell many clothes. We just sold several things for the Emmys. The Oscars will be coming up soon. There's so many award shows in L.A. And we have fabulous gowns. I mean, absolutely incredible.
Oh, I bet you do.
And you don't have to spend five, six, seven, eight thousand dollars now to look gorgeous. You know, you really don't. And at any age, any age, you can look glamorous, really.
Well, that appeals to me. I also like the notion of holding to standards, the quality of the garments.
Yes.
There is a difference.
The way they're made. Once you wear something that has been made by Armani or Gucci or Prada, I mean, you're paying for the name, but you're also paying for the way they're structured.
Right, exactly.
And they feel good. And I have people who come in and say, Maureen, you won't believe this. Remember the suit I got from you 20 years ago? Well, of course, I don't remember, but...
Maureen, I gotta ask you to hold the story.
Yes, of course.
Okay, we have to take a short break. When we return, we'll continue our discussion of the Ageless Art of Fashion with our special guest, Maureen Clavain.
You know, I am getting better. I can still take care of myself. You just don't know.
No, no, three times a day, these drops.
Now that mom's moved in, life has become a bit more complicated for all of us. We knew there would be challenges, but overall, we're glad to be together.
I don't like to call him in the office when I have to go to the doctor or if I want to go out.
We're so thankful for the help we received.
You voted for it, we built it. The Department of Public Works Bureau of Engineering promised to improve, renovate, expand, or construct 32 libraries. On time and under budget, we delivered 36.
Welcome back to Aging in L.A. Our topic today is the Ageless Art of Fashion. And our special guest is Maureen Clavain, an expert in couture clothing and owner of The Address Boutique in Santa Monica. Maureen, you were telling me about people who've come back to you since you've been in business for a while now.
Yeah.
20 years later and say, "Do you remember that wonderful Armani suit I had?"
That's right. And actually, that happened just the other day. And she said, "Remember what I bought 20 years ago?" And she said, "Actually, I wore it the other night." And she said, "I got so many compliments."
Wow.
And so, well, besides which, 20 years now would make it pretty much vintage. And vintage is so in right now.
Yes.
Anything that, you know, is from 20 years ago or longer, people clamor for. And especially, you know, unfortunately, some of the designers are no longer with us, so that makes their things even more precious.
Yes, I agree. Well, I know I was looking, just shortly, a while ago, I was looking at some of the pictures of, like, Jacqueline Kennedy.
Yes.
She's, she would be stylish in any age.
Absolutely. Well, that look is definitely in, the sleeveless little dress.
Mm, simple.
And the little simple jacket.
Yes.
And, you know, every once in a while, they recapture that look. And I have a lot of those little dresses. And the nice thing about those dresses, they're good for someone any age and you can wear them anyplace.
Okay, now, when you say "any age," sometimes people of a certain age think, "Well, I've got to stay with the muted tones. I gotta stay in the grays and the browns." But that's just not true anymore.
I don't think you can really have that kind of color. I mean, my favorite color is actually black. And black is always good. And the little black dress is never out of style. And Jackie Kennedy with her little black sleeveless and her little pillbox hat was a perfect fashion plate, you know?
And there's so much you can do with it, too.
Yes.
It's not to be forgotten that sometimes you have the basic garment and then you can change its appearance entirely with...
With earrings or a pashmina or a little bolero jacket or many, many different things.
You know, we're talking about this. So here's, as a treat, it's time to watch Maureen in action as she advises a senior on how to perk up her wardrobe. So let's watch as Cindy Martin drops in for some wardrobe tips. Here comes Cindy.
Welcome. What can I help you with today?
I want something elegant.
Something elegant. Come on back and I'll help you. Cindy, you look so elegant.
Thank you.
I hope you love your outfit.
I love it.
We put you in a Saint John for Evening Knit Jacket with a Stuart Weitzman lovely little bag. You have your Faith Porter earrings and jewelry, which are so special. You have, we put this with a black jersey skirt and camisole. Now, you can do many changes with this outfit. This particular outfit that you have on is perfect for a graduation, going to a cocktail party, going to a Hollywood premiere, going to a wedding, going to a bar mitzvah. What else can we think of? A fashion luncheon? You would steal the show. So you look absolutely stunning.
Thank you, thank you.
And you know what? With this basic black that you have, I can show you something that actually, I think you said you were going to be going to work. And I can show you something that you can put with this that will take you to an office job, a career job, anything important like that, okay?
Yes.
So let's go back and try it.
Okay.
Okay, good. Okay, Cindy, now, what we have here, we have the same skirt, the top, and we put you in this darling little Alberto Macaulay sweater top, which isn't quite as elegant, but is still lovely. So now, you're dressed for, could be a corporate job. You could be the head person at a bank. You could be the principal of a school. You could be having your own store, whatever that might be. It's lovely for daytime, for morning meetings. And then, we also put a purse, a different purse with this. This is a Ferragamo little bag, which is very lovely. And so, we could go on and on and on, changing tops to put with this black two-piece outfit. And they all work. And you're a lovely model. Turn around for one second and let's show the back of this, too. So you look just as good in the back as you do in the front, because people do see you both ways.
Okay.
Okay, that's terrific.
Thank you.
I think we have one more fun outfit.
Okay.
We'll try it, okay?
Thank you.
Good. So Cindy, now we have you in an entirely different kind of outfit. A little green cashmere top with pretty little colorful bangles on it, white linen pants and a white linen shell. You could even get married on the beach in Hawaii in this, or go to a wedding, or just have fun. Go out with your boyfriend at night, go to a club. You have a Lambertson Truex little straw bag there. And again, with this white pants and the white shell, you can do many different tops. But this is colorful and charming and fun.
Yes.
And so, you look elegantly fun. Cindy, I think we've fulfilled all of your expectations. We put you in an elegant evening jacket. We got you to work in a wonderful little sweater top. And now, you can even go to a wedding in this beautiful little outfit, wear it on the beach, whatever. So I think we had fun with this makeover and I hope you had a great time.
Oh, I did, thank you.
What a fun piece, Maureen. That was great. And you say to Cindy, I won't say her age specifically, but octogenarian.
And she is young. There's a perfect example of someone who's young at heart, who doesn't give a hoot about her age, but wants to have fun.
Right, and look good.
And look terrific, absolutely.
I remember asking my grandfather one time why we had to dress up to go to church. And he says, "Well, when people dress up, they're better behaved."
That's very good. I like that.
And, you know, if you put a little thought and effort into your wardrobe, it actually can alter your outlook and your behavior.
And the way, and the way you stand and the way you think about yourself.
Right, and of course, posture is so important to people of a certain age.
Yes.
Because they've gotten maybe a little lazy and they start to slump and...
That's for sure.
Why?
Stand up straight. Stand up straight while you can.
Sure. Exactly, exactly. I have to ask you, how do the designers feel about this resale market? Are they proud that their fashions have held up over time?
I think they're very proud, actually.
Really?
Yes, absolutely. You know, and many times, I get samples from the designers. I mean, I do carry some new things as well. And I try to fill in with the sizes, you know, that are, so 12s, 14s, 16s and things like that.
Little larger size, well, we all get a little bigger.
Yes, we do.
Well, before I forget, I want to remind people again, now you're on Wilshire Boulevard in Santa Monica.
In Santa Monica. 1116 Wilshire Boulevard. It's a white building with a bright turquoise fence.
Yeah, I love the outside, dude.
Thank you.
It's very stylish.
And there's parking in the back, meter parking in the front. And we'll greet you with open arms.
Ah, that's fun. Now, again, I want to encourage people to sort of think outside the box here, either to bring you clothes that they may wish to share with someone else, but also to come shop.
Coming and shop, it's a fun way to shop.
Sure, yes.
And they'll love our store and everyone's very friendly. I have people who've been shopping with me for years and now they bring their grandchildren in.
Yeah, now, I'm gonna sneak this out here. You had a little list of names of some of the people that might, you might bump into.
Well, these are some of the people who are actually in their 60s that you never think of it that way, you know?
And are still quite fashionable.
Very, I mean, Barbra Streisand, Jane Fonda, Priscilla Presley, Diane Sawyer.
Yes.
I mean, these are all glamorous, wonderful women who could easily be 30 or 40.
Right, and nobody is saying that they're too severe.
No.
Or their dressing inappropriate, because the fact is, they wear their outfits proudly and they look good in these things.
Exactly, and they look fabulous.
Sure.
And incidentally, on the walls in my store are pictures of many celebrities that I get clothes from, and you'll find some very, very famous names there.
Well, there's something special about that, you know?
Yes, that you're the same size as somebody, you know?
Right, of course.
Whose name they'll have to come in and see.
Oh, Maureen, this has been such a treat and I'm pleased to let Los Angeles know that The Address Boutique is here and that you're here to help them with their fashion concerns.
Thank you so much for choosing our store. It's been wonderful and so lovely and we'll look forward to seeing all your friends.
Great, thank you. Time is up for today's edition of Aging in L.A. Thanks so much to our guest, Maureen Clavain, from The Address Boutique on Wilshire Boulevard in Santa Monica. And now, it's time for our feature on Aging in L.A., Senior Stat Shots, where we look at statistics or information that pertains to senior citizens. And once again, we found today's statistics in the recently released L.A. County Seniors' Count, a survey of the older adult population in Los Angeles City and County. We featured this survey before on our program. Now, in our last program, we looked at statistics that showed various degrees of difficulty that some seniors have in performing everyday tasks, such as getting in and out of bed, preparing and eating meals, and using the telephone. Today, we will look at statistics that show who helped them with their tasks. Of those who had some degree of difficulty with these tasks, 17% were assisted by their spouse, 12% by another relative, 4% had a friend help them, 6% were helped by a volunteer or agency, and 28% had no one to help them. 32% of those asked this question did not respond. And that's today's Senior Stat Shot. Now, you can get your own copy of this fact-filled survey. Simply, simply go online to the Los Angeles County Community and Senior Services. The website is up there on your screen. Just click on L.A. County Seniors' Count and the full report will appear. I'm Paul Peterson for the Los Angeles Department of Aging, the people here at City View, Channel 35, and all of our guests on Aging in L.A. Thank you so much for watching. See you next time.
Hi, I'm Renee, representing for Juventus from Van Nuys. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel.
We'll do another forum call through the City Council meeting for Wednesday.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, June, sorry, July 13, 2011. We're here in the John Forrow Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. I want to welcome members of the public and our distinguished guests that are here with us today. You'll hear more about that shortly, but I want to also welcome our viewers on Channel 35, who can catch our council meetings live throughout the city's cable system on Channel 35 every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. It's rebroadcast in the evening as well. And also, we are available through three other ways, through the internet by going to our city's homepage at lacity.org. And you can watch live streaming webcasts of our council meetings as well as archived footage of any of our past council meetings. We're also available remotely. If you live closer to San Pedro or to Van Nuys, you can go to those city halls and testify remotely from there. And finally, you can use your telephone and call the following number, 213-621-CITY. That's 213-621-CITY. And you can listen in to any of our council meetings as well as our full committee meetings as well. We also have our agendas made available 72 hours in advance. Those are made available online and posted in city buildings. 24 hours in advance for our special meeting items. And if any of those items are of interest to you, you can come and testify either in committee or here in the full council on those items. There's a section of the meeting for general public comment. That's for items that are not on today's agenda, but nevertheless, under our city's jurisdiction. And that's two minutes per speaker at the podium here. Any items that are specific items you'd like to speak on have either public hearings in our committee or in the full council. If they've already had committee hearings, it requires a council member to reopen it. Otherwise, a card from the public will trigger a automatic hearing here in council chambers. I want to thank those council members who are here on time. Council members Weezer, Labange, Perry, and Zine. We are waiting for our quorum right now. Thank you, Mr. Englander, as well, for joining us. We have Mr. Reyes and Mr. Weston excused today. Ms. Hahn is also excused. That leaves Mr. Alacon, Cardness, Coretts, Krikorian, Parks, and Rosendahl, if you will please join us as soon as possible. Again, that's council members Alacon, Cardness, Coretts, Krikorian, Parks, and Rosendahl, if you will please join us. As soon as we have 10 members, we will begin. We're waiting four more members. We also have with us today very distinguished guests and a delegation in council chambers, which we'll be making a presentation for. But we have guests who are visiting us from what I would like to consider a sister city of ours, Bangkok, Thailand, and we'll be giving a presentation to them in just a couple of minutes. But we thank the governor and his delegation for being here. So please, hold on and we will get started in about five minutes' time. Thank you very much. Thank you again, council members Englander and Weezer, Labange, Perry, and Zine. We're still awaiting council members Alacon and Cardness, Coretts, Krikorian, and Parks, and Rosendahl. Please make your way down as soon as possible. Thank you.
For our presentation, while we wait the quorum, Council President Eric Garcetti with distinguished guests.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and appreciate the recognition. We all know, we all know that Los Angeles is actually a Spanish word, Los Angeles, which means the angels, and we're referred to as the City of Angels. What's not known is there's another, or lesser known here in the United States, is there's another great city of angels as well, halfway around the world, a place that has been closely tied to Los Angeles, a place whose ties in terms of the commerce and the culture, the social ties, as well as the business and travel and tourism ties have linked us for a long time. Another city of angels, Bangkok, Thailand. And we are very, very pleased to and honored today to welcome to these council chambers Governor Sukumban Paribatra, who welcomed me as a representative of the city, of this city of angels, in September in his city, Bangkok, Thailand. So before I say anything more, let's please welcome him to our council chambers. I'm delighted to see the governor. He is somebody who has distinguished himself for over 20 years, impeccable credentials. He has attended the University of Oxford, Pembroke College, studied PPE there, has a master's degree in international relations from a U.S. university, Georgetown, and has served in the state, sorry, in the national legislature as well as now being the governor, which is kind of the mayor plus-plus of Bangkok, one of the great metropolitan areas of the world. He is here to accept from Travel and Leisure Magazine the City of the World Award for Bangkok, Thailand. Not the first time they have won it either, but a fabulous and incredible place to visit, a place in which vibrant cultural tapestry exists, a place where some of the best food in the world is, old religious and architectural traditions, a place that I commend to all Angelinos and Americans to go visit. But it's great to also see their government in the hands of a tested and true political scientist, somebody who has a vision for the city. When we sat down, we spoke so much because both of our cities have also had challenging times. We've had urban unrest. Bangkok went through political turmoil and it was not dissimilar to the same sort of unrest that we had here in the city of Los Angeles in the early 90s. Looking at how we can rebuild that trust among citizens, rebuild that sense of democracy, which is a vibrant tradition in Thailand as well as here, but also how we can continue to have those economic ties. We think of Los Angeles as one of the great Thai cities of the world. We know that it is the largest population of Thais outside of Thailand. And we know that the contributions of Thais and Thai-Americans here in Los Angeles have made Los Angeles the strong city that it is today. A visit to Thai Town and looking at the investments there, looking at our commissioners like Chansey, who we'll hear from hopefully in a minute. These are all parts of the friendship and tradition that we have between our two great cities. So I'd like to hand the microphone over for a moment to our great ambassador-at-large, if you will, Tom Labange, who's the head of our Sister City Association. We spoke, the governor and I, about the possibility of pursuing that path. He was interested in becoming a sister city with the city of Los Angeles, two cities of angels perhaps together. But Tom, if you'd like to say a few words, he represents the area where the consulate is as well. And I know he also represents part of the Thai Town area with me. And he has been a great ambassador for all of these friendships that we have. But with that, I hand it over to Tom Labange and then we'll hear from the governor.
Well, thank you very much, Governor. Welcome to you and your delegation, which is so special. The Thai people are great contributors here in Los Angeles, as all immigrants are. And I'm proud with Mr. Garcetti to share in that. I'm proud of your citizens who are here. I'm proud, I want to do what they do in football. I want to intercept that award you get and make Los Angeles the city that you are, which is so special, to be named by Traveler the one very special city to all go. So I thank you. We will pursue a friendship city with Bangkok immediately and look for a sister city from your community leadership as we go forward. But I'll turn it back to our president of the city council, Kampu Pakap.
Thank you very much, Tom. And on behalf of the entire council and the mayor who you're about to meet with as well, we want to present to you on the occasion of your visit, now, I know that Bangkok, I don't know if you know by heart the long name for Bangkok, but I know it's something like 40 words long. Ours is pretty long, too. People know us as Los Angeles, but we're actually El Pueblo de Nuestra Señora, la Arena de los Ángeles de Porciúncula, which is the village of Our Lady, the Queen of the Angels of the small portion. And so, on the occasion of your visit to our pueblo, our village, which has now become a great city as well, we wanted to extend our warmest wishes and hopes that you will visit us again. Please welcome His Excellency, the Governor of Bangkok, Sukumban Paribatra. Thank you. Well, we'll take some other pictures and back to you. We'll take a couple of pictures here. We'll take a couple of comments here. Please, if you'd like to say some words. Thank you.
President Garcetti, distinguished members of the Los Angeles City Council. It is indeed a great honor and pleasure for me and my delegation from the Bangkok Metropolitan Administration to have this opportunity to visit the City Hall of Los Angeles and to attend a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council and, not least of all, to receive from the President this wonderful, beautiful certificate of welcome. As President Garcetti has just mentioned, the two, our two cities share a number of things. We have the same name, the Thai name for Bangkok is Grueng Teep. Grueng means city, Teep means angels, so we also are called, our city is also the City of Angels. As a Thai, I'm very happy that perhaps over a hundred thousand Thais or more happily call Los Angeles their home. They happily live and work here, and we in Thailand admire and follow their accomplishments very closely. And for this reason, even though we don't, we don't, the two cities don't have formal friendship ties, we feel very close already to Los Angeles, and hopefully that if we can iron out some technical difficulties, we can proceed to become sister cities and proceed to cooperate in a number of ways for the mutual interests of the two cities and the peoples of the two cities. I would like to thank President Garcetti and the distinguished members of the Los Angeles City Council for their hospitality. And let me offer, make an open offer of friendship and cooperation to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Really appreciate it. Would you like to introduce any of the delegation?
If I just can introduce members of, some members of my delegation. Next to me is one of my deputy governors, Tzuwan. She's the youngest female deputy governor in history. The next is Deputy Permanent Secretary, Pythapong Saiyira. And we have two advisors to the governor, Police Colonel, Sutawat Basi, and another advisor, and Deputy spokesman, Wassan Mewong. And my assistant, Assistant Chief of Staff, Mensei Gheerbat. Deputy Director of the Department of Culture, Sports, and Tourism, Kunkien Pon. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And from the Thai community here, wanted to give Chanseet Martorel, who is a great, not only representative of the Thai-American community, but a great Angelino who's also a commissioner here in the city of Los Angeles, the opportunity to say a few words as well.
Thank you so much, President Garcetti and Councilman Tom Labanj. As a member of the city family as well, as planning commissioner, City Hall is my second home practically. But on the occasion of this very special visit, I just want to extend my gratitude to the city for just welcoming our counterparts here in, from Bangkok, Thailand, and also hope that after today, we will be able to really pursue some projects together, in particular, the Sister City Project, something that the Thai Community Development Center has been campaigning for, because after all, the city of Bangkok is City of Angels, Los Angeles, City of Angels. It makes so much sense, and there's just all kinds of possibilities, opportunities that could result from that in terms of projects and developments that will enhance Thai Town and make Thai Town even more vibrant. And I want to also thank the governor and his delegation for paying respects to the Thai community here in Los Angeles. He acknowledged that we are the largest community abroad outside of Thailand. And on this special occasion, very auspicious occasion, I also want to present a token of our appreciation from the Thai Community Development Center. I'm so glad that we were able to play a role in arranging this meeting as well. And so, on behalf of the Thai Community Development Center, I would like to present to you a book that I just published for Thai CDC called Thais in Los Angeles. So you have a whole history encapsulated in this book, published by Arcadia Publishing, and all hundred percent of the proceeds go to Thai Town Development. And the Thai consulate bought fifty copies, so this is one of the copy that we're going to give you. And then also, the whole history of Thai CDC and the vision of Thai Town is included in this packet as well. So, thank you very much. Thank you.
Take a picture so you'll be in volume two. See? Volume two, volume two.
Yes, yes. Okay.
Thank you very much. We're going to go take some pictures.
We do have Mr. Rosendahl just pushing. Mr. Rosendahl.
I was listening intently to the discussion there. I've had the pleasure of going to Bangkok and to Thailand. It is a beautiful country, and the relationship as a sister city should happen and be dramatic, and I urge everybody to go back and forth. And also to have such a large Thai community here shows what Los Angeles is. Los Angeles is the blender and the microcosm of the entire Earth. We have a hundred and forty different languages that are spoken here. We have large populations from everywhere, and so the tie between Los Angeles and the rest of the world is a dramatic human tie. Our airport is the number-one destination airport in the planet because of the relationships between the people here and their home countries throughout the planet. That is what has made America great. It is, all nations come here and settle and mix and mingle and become what the whole world should be, which is one united world. And I can tell you that my experiences in Thailand were wonderful. The people are beautiful, and the cultural exchange and the tourist exchange and the business exchange needs to get greater and stronger. God bless you. Thank you.
Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mayor, just wanted to welcome you to Los Angeles. I represent a significant Thai community in my own district, and my district includes Wat Thai, which was the first Thai temple established in the United States and one of the great spiritual and cultural centers of the Thai community, the diasporic Thai community. And so, it's a great pleasure to welcome you. Certainly, the Thai community has enriched the history of Los Angeles and the culture of Los Angeles, and I'm looking forward to being able to work with you closely to establish this sister-city relationship, which I think will be so important. I've also had occasion to visit Bangkok, and I'm looking forward to going back when Bangkok is the sister city of Los Angeles. So, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'd like to also introduce from the consul, consulate is here, Monkhorn Pratungkao, who is the Deputy Consul General, to say a couple of words of official welcome as well.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm here as a representative of the Thai government, and very proud that I be here in Los Angeles to represent not only the Thai government, but the larger Thai community overseas. And we're looking forward and hoping that within a couple of months, not in a long period of time, Thailand, no, Bangkok and Los Angeles will be have a official tie, becoming a sister city. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you again, Mr. President. We appreciate it, and I know that we have to go to a meeting with the mayor, but we want to again welcome, on behalf of the City of Angels, the mayor and the governor of another city of angels, Bangkok, Thailand. We look forward to many more years of friendship together.
Very well. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
Kampu Pakap.
Thank you, Mr. Labanj. All right, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Halakon, Cardenas, Englander, Han, Weezer, Coretts, Krikorian, Labanj, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Weston, Zain, Garcetti. Twelve members present in a quorum. Mr. President.
First item, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Perry, seconded by Mr. Parks.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Rosendahl, seconded by Mr. Englander.
Mr. President, would you like to run through the agenda at this time?
Let's do that, please.
Items one through three are items noticed for public hearing. There is a request from the Department of Building and Safety to continue item two to July 20th, as well as a request from a member to continue item three to August 17.
So without objection, continue number two and three. On number one, no one's calling it special. Open the roll.
Mr. President, there are no cards for number one. You may feel free to close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing. Open the roll on number one. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
All right. That's one, two, and three done. Next item, please.
Items four through nine are items for which public hearings have been held. A committee report for item six has been submitted and distributed to council.
So four through nine, colleagues. Mr. Coretts.
If I could call item number eight special.
Number eight special. For Mr. Coretts, Mr. Parks.
Five and six special.
Five and six special, five and six. Mr. Rosendahl. So that's four, seven, and nine. On four, seven, and nine, seeing no one calling it special, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
So four, seven, and nine finished. Next items, please.
Mr. President, items 10 through 25 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Do we have cards on any of those?
Mr. President, we have cards on items 10, 15, 16, 18, 19, 23, and 25.
So we'll call all those special, 10, 16, 18, 19, 23, 25.
As well as item 15, sir.
Fifteen?
Correct. Ten, fifteen.
Those will all be special. On the remaining items, we do have twelve members present. Any specials, colleagues, on the remaining items? Seeing none? Open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
All right. So, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, that takes council back to items called special or public comment on items not on council's agenda.
Mr. Parks.
Fourteen, fourth width, those are those levy issues.
Eleven through fourteen, fourth width. Very well. Eleven through fourteen, fourth width on those levy items. Let's do public comment. We have a few public comment cards. Mr. Weezer, can you indulge that for a few minutes? Or do you want to go with yours first?
Public comment's fine. That's, we do have a number of people here on item 25, so I do want to ask that that be taken out of order, but...
Well, you've only got one card on number 25.
Oh, we do? Okay. But we have a number of people here. Okay, that's fine.
But they haven't filled out cards. Okay, so maybe it's on public comment. Okay. Lorraine Ornellis, public comment, ma'am.
Members of the city council, Mr. President Protem. I am Lorraine Ornellis, a proud resident of San Pedro in Councilwoman Janice Han's district and her hometown. I congratulate her on being Congresswoman-elect from the 36th district. Her family was justly proud of her accomplishment last night at Porzakal Restaurant. My thanks to Councilwoman Jan Perry, Councilman Tom Labanj, Mayor Antonio Villarosa, and City Attorney Carmen Trutanich for appearing last night and issuing their support. I know this meant a lot to her. Although I will miss her as my councilwoman, I wish her the best of luck in her new job in Washington, D.C. as our Congresswoman. She will bring the same vitality to her position in her untiring efforts on behalf of her constituents. I would also like to express our condolences from the city of San Pedro on the loss of her mother, a truly remarkable matriarch. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Dr. Williams.
Dr. Clyde Williams, Els Reno, also a member of the L.A. 32 Neighborhood Council and its DWP MOU representative. A couple, almost ten days ago, the DWP MOU Neighborhood Council Group met on a Saturday morning. They voted unanimously that DWP rate increases should be deferred until a ratepayer's advocate is in place. One gentleman basically said, hey, we voted for this overwhelmingly, but where is it? DWP wants a rate increase for a lot of things. Supposedly, the once-through cooling that will be coming supposedly on Friday or maybe later is another rate increase. Is that included in the rate increases that they propose? We don't know. But 10 cents a kilowatt hour, that seems a little high, but does it have to be? Right now, there's a disagreement as to, do we want to pay higher rates or do we want to be green? How much do we want to pay to be green? We in the neighborhood councils have voted unanimously not to have the rates increased until a ratepayer's advocate can, might say, vet these things and find out what's really going on within DWP. They finally put their presentation that they had yesterday online today, so we can look at it, but the rates included in that are rather large. But now they're going to ask for a variance from the regional water board, a variance so that it takes 15 years longer to implement what they were supposed to have in 2020. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sachs. Well, Dr. Williams, the question about the ratepayer advocate is, there is no real question because the council gave the city just exactly what the council wanted to do. They said, we want this ratepayer advocate on the ballot, but they were no plans, as you can see, the plans are now just being drawn up. Always the cart before the horse, leading from behind, which is a priority of city council. And don't think that they worked by themselves, they worked with DWP to put this fiasco together. But I would like to talk a little bit about the stadium. It's only two more weeks before the decision. Talk about LeBron and his decision. This is Staples, this is AEG and its decision. July 31st, the clock is ticking. Mr. Rosendahl, did you actually say what was in this news article? That I'm happy that I got answers to the questions, be they answers or non-answer answers? Did they quote you on that? Did you actually say that? Just go do, you know, like Homer Simpson, do. And the questions you ask are very good. And the article says, said that those questions would be answered later. So what questions are being asked now? That these good questions that you asked regarding loss of funding for the convention center and, and what else did you ask about? What would happen to companies that leave the convention center? If those questions aren't being asked, what questions are being asked? And then, what will happen just in case the NFL doesn't put a football stadium, a team in the stadium? What's the Plan C from our friends at AEG? And the L.A. Arena Land Company is running Staples Center.
Al Ghul is our next speaker. Al Ghul, followed by John Walsh.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the council. In the spring of 2009, members of the Southwest Museum Coalition met with you, some of your and your staff, Councilmen Bernard Parks, Tony Cardenas, and Bill Rosendahl. You were the members of the Board of Referees... You were the members of the Board of Referees Powers. We even talked to the staff of Councilman Labanche. Besides that, we came to council meetings week after week to explain to you what the issue was. How the Actree was breaking the law by not honoring the merger agreements with the Southwest Museum. You understood what was at stake. And you, along with council members Janice Han and Reyes, voted in favor of the Southwest Museum. Three weeks ago, nothing, and I repeat, nothing had changed. Actree was still refusing to abide by the law. Why did you vote against the Southwest Museum along with the other council members? With your vote, you have become complicit to the destruction of the Southwest Museum, the first museum in Los Angeles, and the thievery of its collection. You have destroyed part of our history and legacy. You have taken the pride and economic future of our community. You took away the leverage of our community that our community had. After you did your bad deed, you talked about saving it. You need to talk with your vote, not with words that will, the wind will take away. Was all those words of saving the Southwest Museum to placate the anger of the community? We have the right to be angry at you. You are not...
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up. John Walsh. Again, you get two minutes to speak. Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. A great victory yesterday, the victory of Torrance. We pushed the Tea Party into the sea. They invaded our county, Los Angeles. They said it was going to be a close race. It wasn't even close. Janice Han won by 10 points. Yes, Barack Obama was more popular than she was four years ago, but Janice held her own. We took the fascists and Craig Huey, I hope you didn't miss the story in the Long Beach Press Telegram, is now under, he has been served papers for child support delinquency. Those are the kind of people that the Republicans run, child support delinquency. Please, if you're interested in corruption in Los Angeles, go to the website Crime After Crime. This is a new movie about corruption, a documentary which the New York Times called magnificent. It's about corruption in LA. Crime After Crime. Go to redevelopment.com. We have taken redevelopment and destroyed it. It no longer exists as of the 1st of October. Now, if the, if the, Mr. Trutanich's deputy attorney wishes to continue to heckling, heckle me, we will continue with our new organization called Anybody But Trutanich For Office. Anybody But Trutanich For DA. As far as who's going to be the next city councilman, it's all over but the noise and the balloting. The next city councilman who will replace Congresswoman-elect Janice Han is Warren Furitani. HollywoodHighlands.org. Go to our website.
Candido Mares in Van Nuys. Candido Mares.
Good morning, Mr. President, councilmember. Candido Mares, proud resident of the 12th district, where I have the honor and privilege to be represented by, represented by another great representative, Councilman Mitch Englinger, and where we believe that we have no boundaries from San Pedro to Chasworth, from the east side to the west side, that we're one city, one people. And last night, we were part of the celebration in San Pedro with Ms. Han, and we want to give her our blessings and thank her for all that she's done for the people of this great city. And, Mr. President, I don't need someone to look like me and to be like me. I'm an American of Navajo and Espanol descent. And what I saw last night was a woman that represented all the people and was loved by all the people. So we're looking forward to the races in the San Fernando Valley. And for those of us who came from the San Fernando Valley to help in that race, we were truly honored to be part of that. And I want to give a shout out to our friend, Mr. Alarcon. He was there last night. And so, again, there were a lot of politicians, but, Mr. Alarcon, thank you for being there last night. But now we have to continue the fight. The fight is DWP. And, Mr. President, councilmembers, you know, they're now considered one of the most hated companies in the United States, but let's separate the utility from the people. 99.9% of the people of DWP are great people. We just need to get rid of that little cancer. Mr. Nichols is the right general manager for this position. He needs our help, but we cannot allow them to hold us hostage. When in one day we have, what, five, six breaks on the water lines? What do you think that is? Are we going to have an investigation of that? Or is that how we, the people, are held hostage? There are people that are tearing out their lawns. We're talking about whether we want to be green or we want to have increases. People are tearing out their lawns and going from green to brown. People are taking showers in their pool. People are limiting the number of showers that allow their children. When are we going to finally stop and say, no more? Mr. President, thank you for the time.
Thank you, Candido. Have a good day. John Camara in the Van Nuys. John?
Good morning, Mr. President and councilmembers. Last night in San Pedro, I had the honor and privilege to be part of history and to be part of the election of Janice Han to the US Congress. As someone from the valley, I've seen the dedication of Janice Han to the people of this great city, and now she would be serving our great country in the same manner. Now that the election is over, it's time to focus back, our full attention on the DWP crisis. We will not allow them to hold us hostage. We, the people of Los Angeles, are the owners of the DWP. And you, Mr. President, councilmembers, must try to step up and represent us and say, cut costs, stop waste, and no more rate increases. And to you, Mr. DWP, city attorney, shame on you for wasting our ratepayers' money. Thank you.
Thank you. That, we have one more that just came in on public comment. Nourdorjian, thank you.
Good morning, city council, respectable city council members. You fellow Angelenos, I'm a liberal Democrat and human rights advocate. My name is Amerek Nourdorjian. I run for the seat of California State Assembly for the next year elections. I promise to raise taxes 50% against wealthy individuals and rich oil and gasoline sale corporations in order to remedy budget deficit in California and create more job government orders, like it'd be in American tradition. I propose to create a California satellite cell phone service for rural and forested areas, territorial waters of California shores. I will create state legislation to control car jams with live satellite surveillance in order to dispose car jams on California freeways. And I believe that California should be afraid of those car mugglings. Instead, we should call a CHP in order to send those CHP motorcyclist cops, you know, in order to get to the head of a car jam and clear up those car jams, like I've seen being done before. I ask all progressive and liberal-minded Californian Patriots Union members to support my liberal candidacy with general donations for my election campaign by calling my cell phone number 3234451600 contributing funds to support a liberal movement. I also appreciate if Los Angeles City Council members buy my 17 paintings that reflect California modern life in order to support Los Angeles-based art. I also promise to make same-sex marriage law of all land in order to uphold civil rights of sexual minorities. In terms of so-called medical marijuana, I actually demand shutting down those illegal medical marijuana dispensaries that violate United States Controlled Substances Act. 56% of Californians rejected legalization of marijuana last November, and I believe they would actually back me up in shutting down those illegal medical marijuana dispensaries with ripoff of customers, with still their life savings, with still profits of legal pharmacies, legal businesses, and make this community, actually a community destitute. Our cities, for instance, where you prohibit all the sales and cultivation of commercial sales of medical marijuana, because they rip off their customers and still their life savings. I propose amnesty for law-abiding Californian ex-felonics after five years of legitimate existence. And as part of my campaign to fight wasteful spending, narcomafy, and corruption, I condemn overrated Los Angeles council members' wages of $178,000. I demand cutting those in half. For instance, Councilman Bernard Parks has three field deputies and legislative deputy, budget deputy, and those, you know, workers do nothing but waste taxpayers' money. Eliminate those field deputies.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. And that is the conclusion of public comment for today. Thank you very much for your comments. Mr. Wezar, thank you for your indulgence. And number 25, and I now have some cards on 25?
Cards, please, please.
We'll go to the cards. Our first one is Arnold Sacks on number 25. And then that'll be followed by Vanessa Lanz. Vanessa Lanz, you'll be the next one up, after Mr. Sacks.
Yes, thank you. Good morning again, Arnold Sacks. So the city and the state want to get into the pockets of domestic workers, like they got into the pockets of the low-income workers at the airport with the living wage ordinance, only to benefit businesses that allow, that are allowed to increase salaries at the expense of health and care. So when you regulate wages, hours, and working conditions, I don't see anything in here about provision of health care, which seems to be the number-one problem or the number-one concern of high-ranking, high-working, high-earning wage, high-earning people who make good wages. So let's include health care in here and maybe eliminate a portion of the wages as long as they're guaranteed to have health care. Because you know what happens if they don't have health care? They end up under public assistance. Thank you.
In the council chambers, Sergeant Arms, it's way too loud. If you can, please quiet down the staff on the sidelines. Thank you. Vanessa Lanz?
Good morning, Mr. President and councilmembers. My name is Vanessa Lanza, and I am the Director of Partnerships at the Coalition to Abolish Slavery and Trafficking, or CAST, here in Los Angeles. CAST was founded in 1998 to fight human trafficking and modern-day slavery in all of its forms. Since its founding, CAST has provided legal, social services, and shelter to hundreds of survivors, most of them who are enslaved right here in Los Angeles. A full 30% of the victims that we have helped escape from enslavement have been enslaved as domestic workers. These former domestic workers are the second-largest group of clients that we serve, just barely exceeded by people who are survivors of sex trafficking. Human trafficking for domestic servitude is so common because working within one employer's home makes one uniquely vulnerable to employment abuses and isolation from other services. Our domestic worker clients frequently describe how their employers told them they had no rights, that the law does not protect them. Clearly, many of the abuses our clients suffer are illegal, but tragically, because they are domestic workers, many of these abuses are not illegal. Imagine explaining to these victims of modern-day slavery that their traffickers were right, okay? That the law does not grant them the right to a full night's sleep, that, or rests, or breaks, or days off. AB 889, the Domestic Workers' Bill of Rights, helps to correct these injustices by granting domestic workers many of the rights that other employers or workers enjoy. We at CAST believe that enacting 889, AB 889, is an important step to preventing domestic servitude and modern-day slavery. And by recognizing the unique vulnerability of domestic workers and helping to make AB 889 a reality, today's resolution from the council also helps prevent modern-day slavery. For that reason, we wholeheartedly support this passage. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Morales.
Good morning. My name is Laura Morales. I vengo de Chirla. Soy trabajadora de casa. Quiero agradecer al concejal, Jose Wezar, por presentar la resolución de trabajadoras en favor de que se apruebe la legislación estatal AB 889. Como trabajadora de casa, comencé a trabajar recibiendo un salario de 175 al mes. No es justo. Todas las trabajadoras merecen descansos, almuerzo, pago de sobretiempo, y mucho más. Por favor, aprueben la resolución de las trabajadoras. Gracias.
Good morning. My name is Laura, and I come from Chirla. I am a domestic worker. I want to thank Councilmember Jose Wezar for presenting this resolution in favor of the domestic workers, and I hope this is approved. That's legislation number AB 889. As a worker, as a domestic worker, I started to work earning a salary of $175 a month, and it's not fair. All the domestic workers, they deserve to rest, resting period. They deserve to have lunch, and also overtime payment and much more. I ask you to please approve this resolution for domestic workers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Sarah Noshian, Jewish Progressive Jewish Alliance.
Hi.
How do you pronounce your last name?
Carnahan.
Carnahan?
Yeah.
Well, you spell it like a doctor, so, go ahead. It's hard to understand that. Go ahead.
My name is Sarah Carnahan. I'm a third-generation Los Angeles native, and I'm here to support the Domestic Workers' Bill of Rights as a family of employers. About a month ago, my grandmother fell and broke a couple of her ribs. There isn't a whole lot you can do for broken ribs except take something for the pain. My mom and her sisters decided to take turns spending the night at my grandparents' home so that she wouldn't need to fully rely on her 97-year-old husband. The second night, my grandma had a particularly bad reaction to her pain medication, resulting in a very long night for my mom, who was staying with her. Between trips to the toilet and worrying about every sound, my family realized that we needed professional help caring for my grandmother while her ribs began to heal. We got in touch with Pat, a wonderful caregiver, who was able to come on short notice and spend the next few nights with my grandparents. Later, I asked Pat what a fair rate for her work was. Her response was that she didn't have a rate and just accepted whatever the employer felt was good. This story tells us three basic things about domestic work in California. First, that needing a caregiver can be unexpected and often comes at a dramatic point in a family's story. Second, that domestic work is demanding, exhausting, important, and necessary in equal measure. And finally, that even if a family wants to do the fair, right, and just thing, they don't necessarily have anyone to turn to for guidance. Supporting AB 889, the Domestic Workers' Bill of Rights, would mean that families like mine would know that there's a baseline of expectations and standards, which would make an often emotional decision a little bit easier, knowing that people do their best work when they have the confidence that they will get what they need. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lolita. We do.
Hi, good morning. My name is Lolita Leido, and I'm from the Filipino Worker Center. So I represent thousands of caregivers Filipinos who are caregivers. So the reason why we are very much in support of this is the most caregivers, especially those that give care to those patients that are suffering from Alzheimer, dementia, stroke victims, they need 24-hour care. But the problem is like, on the side of the caregivers, if they're on a living setup, they cannot get any sleep. California labor law says that if you don't get five hours uninterrupted sleep, they need to pay you 24 hours. But we tell them, we don't need the money we needed to survive and rest. So this is the reason why we are in full support of the AB 889, because we are fighting for the survival, for the survival of the caregivers and other domestic workers who are in this setup. So thank you very much, and have a good day.
Aquilina Versosa?
Hello, councilmembers. My name is Aquilina Soriano Versosa. I am the Executive Director of the Filipino Worker Center, and I'm here supporting this resolution for the Domestic Workers' Bill of Rights. One, because this is really an issue of equality and dignity. Right now, the law tells us that domestic workers are not as valuable as other workers because they don't deserve the same rights as other workers. And the Domestic Workers' Bill of Rights uplifts that dignity and brings equality to the law. They were excluded in the 1930s.
children, those with disabilities. We need to give them the care that they deserve, and to be able to do that, we need to be able to provide quality job, working conditions, also for the caregivers that develop this very intimate and provide a uniquely important service to keep that basic foundation of our society whole. It's a work that makes all other work possible. Thank you.
Our final speaker, Frida Hingosa. It's not Carnahan. Mr. Weezer?
Thank you. It's still a little too loud in here when the public comment is going on.
I agree.
If you could ask our officers to ask our people speaking on the sidelines to either take it outside or lower their voices. Thank you.
I absolutely agree. Sergeant Arms, we have staff along the sides that are disrupting the meeting. Either move behind the pillar or take your conversations to the back of the council chamber. You're disrupting the meeting, and it's the staff that's doing that. So Sergeant Arms, please have those folks comply with the silence that's required while we have this session. Go ahead, ma'am.
Muy buenos dias, señor presidente y concejales. Mi nombre es Frida Hinojosa, and I'm from Chirla.
Good morning, council members and Mr. President. My name is Frida Hinojosa, and I am from Chirla.
Estoy aquí en apoyo a la Carta de Derechos.
I come here to support the Bill of Rights.
Porque considero que la unidad es la base principal.
I think that unity is the principle, is basic.
Para hacer el camino más fácil.
In order to have an easier way to reach there.
Y así de esta manera lograr nuestras metas.
To be able to obtain our goals.
Como ustedes saben, las trabajadoras de casa.
As you know, the domestic workers.
Somos trabajadoras excluidas.
We are excluded as workers.
De los derechos más básicos.
From the basic rights.
Y excluidos de las leyes laborales.
And we are also excluded from the labor laws.
Y en muchos casos estamos expuestos.
In many cases, we are exposed.
A los abusos físicos.
To physical abuse.
Emocionales.
Emotional.
Y laborales.
Physical labor and emotional abuse.
Y queremos su apoyo para lograr nuestros derechos.
We would like you to support us in order to obtain our rights.
Como es el overtime. Descansos, ocho horas para dormir, usar la cocina, y compensación al trabajador, y pago por cancelación de trabajo el mismo día.
Yeah, we deserve the right to be paid for overtime, to be able to take a break, to have lunch, and eight hours, eight hours to sleep, and we have the right to use the kitchen and compensation as a worker. We also need to...
Pago por cancelación de trabajo.
We also deserve to be paid whenever they cancel our work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Marian Vogler Fogler in the Valley, number 25. Marian Fogler.
Yes, hello, yes. I want to let you know that these people are full-fledged workers and that they deserve the same as the, as anybody else is working in our society. So I just want to say that, that the benefits and the wages should be separate, and that when you're talking about the health care, even for domestic workers, along with public workers, it should be according to what it costs, okay? You can't just slightly say, well, we're going to take a certain percentage from people and then say, well, that's what's going to cost for your health care retirement. I think it should be a proportion of the cost of what it costs the city. So I think we need a real look, a reexamination of this. The coalition members are complaining, and I wouldn't be surprised if domestic workers would be doing the same. So I didn't get a chance to speak on six today because I had, I had a hard time getting over here. I have some arthritis, but I want to have some way of having a contribution to the health care retirement.
We're on 25. You need to have your comments on 25, please.
Well, I'm talking about domestic workers would want to do the same. I would think that they would like to help contribute to their health care retirement, too. Everybody does.
No, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about domestic worker employees.
Well, isn't that what the employees are?
You mentioned number six, but we already passed six. Now run 25. All right. Thank you. Another card. Armeniak Nordejornian, number 25. That's all I have. Are you going to speak, sir?
Yeah.
Nordejornian, I have your card. That's the last card I have on this. There's a whole bunch of people lined up, and I don't have any other cards.
Mr. President. The man is next up to speak. For clarification, 25A has now been submitted and distributed to council for consideration.
Hold on a minute. The man who just called is up to speak. Mr. Garcetti? No, he's up to speak right now. I don't know about the rest of those folks. There's no cards for him. Go ahead.
Respectable city council members, I actually very much support current item 25, which brought actually attention to the plight of domestic workers. Me myself, a domestic worker caregiver. At times, I encountered, let's say, witnessed emotional abuse, you know, of domestic workers. And previously, I was told that domestic workers were actually undervalued, or maybe, you know, were kept in less regard than other workers, but I believe it's untrue. You know, domestic workers are respected and kept in high regard as any other worker in this country. I also believe that wages of domestic workers should be established at a rate of at least $12 an hour in order to, you know, to be competitive in terms of, so that workers would be able to pay rent, you know, balance out food and our expenses, you know, and live above the poverty line. So I demand that city council members establish a pay rate of at least $12 an hour for domestic workers, and mostly working conditions should be actually regulated as well, so that domestic workers all had health insurance. For instance, union offered me health insurance, and now I hope we'll be able to enjoy health insurance. And so we'll be coping, because now the wages of domestic workers are rather low, and even I'm talking about people who work at wages of $9 an hour. And I believe that actually, they should be raised, was wages of domestic workers, to at least $12 an hour, and city council members could contribute to welfare of domestic workers by raising wages to $12 an hour, so we could contribute to prosperity of domestic workers there. And I fully support that current item 25.
Thank you. Mr. Weezer, there were a number of people lined up with their neural cards. What was your preference, sir?
Great, thank you. That's fine, Mr. President. They wanted to express support, but we explained to them the rules about having to sign a card.
Okay. You're up now.
Thank you, Mr. President. And colleagues, what's before us is a motion to support a bill, AB 889, that's before the legislature. It just passed the state senate's labor committee and is headed to its appropriations committee, and we are hoping to build as much momentum to have this bill eventually get to the governor's desk. And what better way to build momentum than have the state's largest city put support behind this bill? There are over 200,000 or so domestic workers in the state of California, and given the demographics, a majority of them are here in Los Angeles. And what this bill will essentially do is give domestic workers the same basic rights as many other workers enjoy in the state of California. And if you think about it, they do some very important work. They care for our loved ones, our children, our elderly, our sick. And when we don't have regulations that protect these workers, this system is ripe for abuse. For example, you've heard from some of the workers right now that they're not aware of when they can or cannot take breaks, or if they could take breaks at all. Sometimes for domestic workers who are live-ins, there are no rules about uninterrupted sleep, whether they can go on and enjoy a good night's sleep without being interrupted through the night, obviously in cases of emergencies or others. But there are no regulations with respect to domestic workers in our laws in the state of California, and that makes it ripe for abuse. So this bill would essentially allow for some regulations to govern basic issues that I just mentioned, and hopefully with the city's support behind this, we will move forward and address these issues. Now, when we think about workers' rights and all that has happened, you know, we, sometimes we think about the industrial age, when we fought in the streets for basic rights. We think about the farmworkers here in California and the struggles they had. But here in our own backyard, in our homes, we have some of the same issues right before our eyes, and we should do something about it. The time is now. Let's do something, and hopefully when it gets to the governor's desk, our governor, who ran on a platform of protecting and supporting workers, that he would also support our domestic workers. Thank you. I ask for your...
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Mr. Garcetti, followed by Mr. Reyes.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Weezer, for doing this, and thank you to everybody who's come here today. I think people around this horseshoe have talked about their own families and those who have come before them and how important they have been. My great-grandmother was an immigrant from Mexico and came here and worked as a housekeeper for many, many years until she retired. That was her main job. Her husband, my step-great-grandfather, worked as a dishwasher, and theirs is the story of so many of us that come here today. A woman who works in our house is our housekeeper. She worked really hard, and her son was able to graduate from Westchester High School and attend Harvard, Stanford Law School. Today is an incredible contributor to this city. When we look at the work that is done by domestic workers in this city, they are the backbone of Los Angeles. And I want to give my personal thanks because I wouldn't be here today were it not for someone who is a domestic worker, was able to provide for her family and with each generation to improve the quality of their life. And I know for you and your families, the things that you do, that you are able to give, demands that you should have the same respect of people who work just as hard in other professions. And I remember listening, I think it was on national public radio, when New York City started doing this, and I said, LA City should do this as well. And I saw Mr. Weezer was working, and that this was already happening at the state level, so that the city of Los Angeles wouldn't have to just do this one city at a time, but that all of California, the largest state in this union, would set the example that it doesn't matter where you work, it doesn't matter what kind of work you do, it matters that you do work and that you work hard, and that everybody should be treated with that same equality if they are willing to put in with the sweat of their own hands a good day's of work, to make our houses sparkle, to make sure that our families are taken care of, and to make sure that our communities are strong. So thank you for all that you have done. Thank you, Mr. Weezer. This is one of those moments where this could have just go under the radar, and we could kind of say, oh, yeah, that's another great thing. Of course, we believe in this. But this is a huge part of our economy. This is a huge part of our city. And the question we should always ask in here is not, who is speaking and what voices do we hear? It's who is not at the table and what voices don't we hear? And today, we see people at the table who should have been there at the very beginning and deserve to be there at the very end as well. So felicidades, muchisimas gracias por su presencia y su visión, y gracias, Weezer, también.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. And Mr. Reyes, button was pushed by accident since he's not here. Okay. Mr. Parks and then Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Parks and Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Parks?
Oh, no.
Okay. Your button was pushed, sir. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank you for coming here. My parents were immigrants from Germany, and my mother's first job was a maid, a domestic housekeeper. It was in New York, and she couldn't speak the language, and she worked as a maid for a lady in a hotel, the Essex Hotel, a rich woman. And so my father started as a janitor, scrubbing the toilets. And the both of them got married, met each other, and then had eight children. And I'm fortunate, I'm the third of the youngest of eight, and it was a wonderful life growing up with my parents, who were immigrants. But you know, we all deserve basic human and civil rights and dignity, and a living wage is critical for all of us in our society. We're seeing right now the rich get richer and the poor get poorer, and capitalism continues to thrive. It's about profits, not about people. Well, we have to have people in that equation, and if we do it right, and we give people their basic human and civil rights, and we give them a basic dignity, living wage, we've done the right thing. So I want to thank you, Mr. Weezer, for bringing it to our attention. I 100% support you. God bless you. Thank you.
Mr. Weezer, to close.
Thank you. Wow, really, Mr. Rosendahl and Mr. Garcetti, thanks goes to Chirla and now the other organizations and religious institutions that have brought this to our attention. There's a lot of local organizations behind this, and hopefully this does move quickly through the process, and I want to thank my colleagues for your support. As we look out in our districts, whether we see them or not, they are there, and these are people who certainly will benefit tremendously, and not only them themselves, but for the ones that they care for. So thank you for your support.
All right, Mr. Weezer, thank you. On the item as amended, that is before us, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes, 1 no.
All right. Next item, please.
Mr. President, that brings us to item number five, call special for Councilmember Parks. Please be advised that amending motion 5A has been circulated.
We got two cards, Mr. Parks. We don't have, we already had a public hearing? Okay, we have Mr. Sacks, number 5.
The reason I held this, the two, there's two audits here. There's the first audit shows accrued value of $7,782,000 from 2005 to 2008. The second audit shows approximately $6.4 million from 2009 to 2011. Together, those totals add up to almost $14 million. Now, the county in its wisdom, when it did its 37th plan, year plan for the CD BG funds, allocated $56 million, $14 million which were unspent funds. Here's $14 million of unspent funds right here. How is this much money accumulated, $14 million, when everybody's crying, I need more money?
Our next and final speaker on item number 5, Armenak Nordejornian.
Respectable city council members, you fellow Angelinos, well, actually, I fully support that endorse that item 5, you know, with spending, you know, that's been designated for Section 8 Housing Assistance Program at the amount of $2,582,000. Actually, some youth employment program, $1 million, it's kind of spending on social program, it's very progressive politics. So that's why I endorse it, Section 8 Housing Assistance Program, because thousands of Angelinos, let's say, cannot get affordable housing, and this program, this pilot-funded expenditure plan will help and pro- know, that's been designated for Section 8 Housing Assistance Program at the amount of $2,582,000. Actually, Summer Youth Employment Program, $1 million. It's kind of spending on social program, it's very progressive politics. So that's why I endorse it, Section 8 Housing Assistance Program, because thousands of Angelenos, let's say, cannot get affordable housing. And this program, this pilot fund expenditure plan, will help them probably acquire affordable housing. And you know that mostly Angelenos, just like me, we can get affordable housing, housing extremely expensive in terms of Los Angeles proper. And it definitely wouldn't contribute too much to prosperity of Angelenos folks, you know. And actually, this plan is very progressive and instructs that HACLA to, you know, to distribute with Section 8 Housing Assistance Program $2.5 million in order to provide affordable housing to poor Angelenos. So it's a very progressive kind of resolution, and I fully endorse it, you know. As a liberal Democrat, human rights advocate, you know, I actually support this kind of legislation. And also, very progressive thing to do is, you know, to allocate funds of $500,000 for office of gain reduction of youth development. Because Angelenos youth, you know, should be taken care of, you know. And we should spend money for social programs, you know, to get good results, good method. We invest in prosperity of Angelenos folks. It's our progressive politics, and I fully endorse it. And hopefully, the rest of the political will be the same.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, we have an amended motion. All it does is instruct the housing authority to implement their summer youth hiring program by doing it internally as opposed to sending the money to CDD and the CDD sending them back the money. So the committee report basically had the money going to CDD. We're just reversing that and having them do their own internal program.
Very well. Seeing no one else on the queue. Man clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
All right. Next item, please.
Mr. President, that brings us to item number six, called special for Councilmember Parks.
Number six, Mr. Parks. Mr. Parks, number six.
Oh, I'm sorry. Number six, we have the CAO come up and give us an overview of our current financial situation and also advise us. And colleagues, let me just remind you, as the CAO is going through this, this report is very flexible. We are estimating in many instances the savings that will be forthcoming. And as those savings come in, and if they're accurate, we will not be coming back. If they're not accurate, we'll be making other adjustments through the fiscal year. So, Mr. Santana, if you can give us an overview.
Thank you. As Chairman indicated, this report really helps solidify the various bargaining agreements that we reached last fiscal year that resulted in the significant reduction of furloughs, in many cases, the elimination of furloughs altogether throughout the city. So, in some ways, the hard work that your council and the mayor and our office have done is really reflected in this report. And as of the various actions that we are recommending today, we are ensuring that furloughs are eliminated for the majority of city employees. In addition to that, we are recommending a reduction in our payment to both LACERS and the sworn pension boards for purposes of making sure that we could still capture those savings for outstanding agreements. As you know, two weeks ago, you approved PPL's agreement. We will be going forward August 1st to see which members of the police force are interested in opting in to the 2% contribution and those that are opting out. Once we know that, we will know what the actual number is in terms of the savings. We have provided you targets previously, and as Mr. Parks indicated, those are targets and are subject to change.
Why you're reducing the dollars to the pension as opposed to giving it to them and him, them giving it back?
That is correct. The reason we're doing this is, well, we're two reasons. One is that there actually has been a significant reduction as a result of the various labor agreements that we reached. We will be paying our full pension cost over $900 million to both the sworn and to the civilian pension boards. And we will be doing it on July 15th. We're mandated to do it sometime within the fiscal year, and we opt to pay it early in the year so that we can actually obtain a discount. For the... There's a portion, $44 million in pensions and a smaller portion in LACERS that we're reducing because we still have outstanding issues pertaining to the actual number that we'll receive through those who are opting in to pay the 2% contribution. Where the city attorneys, who you had approved, their agreement, will go out to vote, and we'll know the outcome of that vote on the 25th. And we still are in negotiations with other, some other smaller bargaining units in EAA. It's important to put this report in context. This reflects the work that's been done over the last few years in reaching various agreements. Through the various activities that your council and the mayor have adopted, we've been able to reduce our structural deficit projected out in half. Not too long ago, I was projecting nearly a $500 million deficit for fiscal years 12, 13. And this year, we could say that it's closer to 200 million. We received a positive response, as you know, when we went out to meet with various investors. We got the lowest interest rate that the city's ever received on our trans, a validation of the work that we've been doing. And we received confirmation of previous bond rating for our general obligation bonds for two out of the three bond rating agencies. There was one that did downgrade us to the same level as the other two had previously done the previous year. Again, I think as a reminder to all of us that while we've made significant progress, we still have work to do.
Miguel, could you just expand on that in the sense that what that rating means and as far as our ongoing efforts and what we should be attentive to?
Well, with, I mean, the report, and we just issued our own report that summarizes the various rating agencies, really provides us a blueprint of what our to-do list is. And they acknowledge that we've made progress in controlling our costs. They particularly recognize that the city has done an outstanding job in addressing shortfalls as they come. And so, like we've done in the last two years, and we will do again this year, we don't just wait till the end of the fiscal year to make sure that we close our budget. We do it on a quarterly basis through the financial status reports. And so, as information changes, as revenue changes, as expenditures change, we make sure that we address those head-on on a quarterly basis. What this means is that they also acknowledge that clearly the economy remains soft and anemic. This is not a recovery that's going to result in the kind of revenue that we need that catches up to our expenditures. We're projecting a very slow recovery, a very modest growth in our revenue streams. And they also state that the city, like other cities in California, have difficulty in raising its own revenue without going to the voters. All in all, what this means is that there may be a higher cost to our general obligation bonds. We're going to be going out to the market in the next several days for approximately $500 million. These are the general obligation bonds that pay for a lot of the capital improvements and river work and a variety of work that we engage in, as well as the refinancing of current bonds that we have.
And then also, could you just explain, I think you're contemplating having an independent auditor come in, not auditor, but...
Actuary.
Give me the word.
Actuary.
Actuary, yes. Come in and look at the whole issue of the pension, or where we are on those issues for both pensions. Could you just explain why we're doing that?
That is correct. We've been requested by the pension board, and we've agreed that once we know what, how many police officers opt into the 2%, how many of them opt to be, have their retiree healthcare frozen, and as well as we complete our negotiations with UFLAC, we will conduct an independent actuary report that will basically redefine what the actual savings are going to be, not just for this fiscal year, but projected out in the future.
And also, could you comment on how fluid the issue of the personnel and medical costs, that those may change as we go forward also?
Well, yes. Fortunately, what, part of what's allowed us to eliminate furloughs, and that was clearly established in the majority of the MOUs that you approved, is a way of having ourselves absorb any increases in healthcare. And that has been a significant part of the savings that we're using to mitigate furloughs. In the future, we will continue to work with the Joint Labor Management Committee to control those costs. We have specific targets in the MOUs that we, that we are collectively committed to reaching, and those will again go be back, brought back into our system that help us make sure that we can maintain our no-furlough guarantee in the future.
And then my final question, could you explain by the agreement in the MOUs, how that impacts furloughs and how, in returning money to department budgets, how that will impact services?
Well, we've been able to, you know, the biggest motivator behind our labor negotiations was to eliminate furloughs. You directed us to do everything we can to make furloughs no longer part of the city reality. We've been successful with the majority. Currently, city attorneys ratify they're facing 36 days of furloughs. We still have EAA employees that are facing 26 days of furloughs, but by far, the majority of our city workforce is not experiencing furloughs, which is the good news. That in turn provides direct services to our community, allows us to move faster and more effectively on our road improvements, on services throughout the city. The agreements, the actions that are before you take care of the far majority of the furlough gap. The remainder will be taken care of by departments, given the tools in the agreement. For example, all, there should be no step increases for a period of time. The agreement basically puts a halt on all paid overtime, and so that's something that departments will manage on their own. And through that, they could generate savings for unpaid holidays. Most departments will hopefully take that during Christmas and New Year's, when we have the least demand on services. That again provides benefits, enough funding to take care of the remaining gap.
Okay. Colleagues, this report is one of many that we'll follow, along with our FSR, but keeping you updated on the current status. And as changes come about as it relates to the MOUs and the savings, the CAO will keep us abreast of that. And again, you may see some changes from what this report articulates, because some of these savings could fluctuate up or down. And also, it's something in which we will be prepared to adjust on the financial status reports. And so, I'd move that we approve this report if there's no other questions regarding it.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes. Good morning, gentlemen. I know it was low-keyed, and there wasn't much interaction here with what you said, but this was very significant. From the very beginning, one of the biggest issues has been healthcare and pension. And the reality is, we can no longer sustain the kind of healthcare and pension plan that we had in the past. And it appears to me that the unions really stepped up. I can't tell you how grateful I am of the union leadership and the rank-and-file employees in this great city who realize that there's no way we can get beyond the reality of the healthcare and the retirement. Of course, it would be nice if we had leadership in Washington instead of gutless politicians back there that talk the talk and have not delivered healthcare to the American people. And that is a disgrace. And it was very good historically that the unions fought hard for their workers to have healthcare and retirement. But the rubber has hit the road on the local level. We realize it's all connected. When colleagues say, "Well, why are you talking about a national issue?" Because it's all tied together. And I just want to applaud the rank-and-file workers in our city, police and fire and everybody else for stepping up. Now, just recap real quickly by the commitments that they have made to healthcare. How much savings did it do and what kind of furlough situations did it eliminate? And who's still left on the plate that we should encourage to participate in healthcare and retirement? But this is really good news.
It is very good news. There was $98 million in the budget that was for furloughs. A significant portion of that for this fiscal year is being taken care of, the 4% contribution that the majority of our civilian workers are having to make for retiree healthcare. This is not a small ask of our workforce. And this, in the new fiscal year, the majority of our employees went from paying 5, 6% to paying 11%. And so, people are seeing that now in their paychecks, and there were slight discrepancies in how that was done, but that's going to be fixed right away. But it's, so it's, in exchange for that, of course, we're eliminating furloughs. And unfortunately, while furloughs is not, are not intended to be an ongoing solution, we were facing a reality over the next three years where that number would continue to rise. And so, through the contribution towards retiree healthcare, through the smoothing out of the previously negotiated COLAs, through, you know, committing to take, take their fair share in any increases in healthcare, and all the various and unpaid holidays that are part of the mix, all of that allows us to make the no-furlough guarantee a reality.
And is there any group left that still hasn't appreciated the healthcare and retirement?
The city attorneys are currently voting on this matter. We will know the outcome of that vote on the 25th. And we're currently in negotiations with EA, as well as a handful of smaller bargaining units.
So I say to all those folks, please get with the rest of us and go for the healthcare and the retirement plan. And again, you know, the city attorneys were upset with me when I said, you know, they were on furloughs. Well, I know they've been working around the clock. They're an incredible part of making our city a great place. So I urge them to look at their own healthcare and retirement and join us, the rest of us, in this kind of endeavor. But this is really good news, and hats off to the mayor, President of the council, Mr. Parks, and others who played a major role in making this happen, especially you guys here sitting there at the table. But I got to thank every worker in the city that realized that we are where the rubber hits the road. It would be nice if in Washington, D.C., they'd stop foreign wars that make no sense and reinvested in healthcare, infrastructure, and education for the American people before we lose our middle class and our country falls apart. That's what angers me the most. But at the local level, people have stepped up, and I'm very grateful for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom Labange.
Thank you very much, Mr. CAO. On this issue here, are those who manage this fund in agreement with your adjustment here?
You mean, are you referring to the pension boards?
Right.
Yes. No, I think they've raised reservation. They, we have, over the last decade, paid in full our contribution towards both pensions and retiree healthcare. We've been working with them. LACERS in particular has been very accommodating and has understood our situation as these various bargaining units complete their work. The situation that we don't want to find ourselves in is that, I use the city attorneys as an agreement, as an example. We make, we make our full contribution, and the city attorneys ratify the agreement. They start making a 4% contribution towards the pension system. The city will not get a rebate for that. So basically, if we pay it, we lose it. And so, the only way of preventing that from happening is that we have to maintain that, and that at the time of that outcome, then you as a council and the mayor will decide how to proceed forward. We, we're in the same situation right now with the, with the police workers, the, and police. And certainly, if, we don't know how many will opt in and opt out. And once we know that, we will conduct an independent actuary analysis and provide a recommendation as to how to address that.
Is there a, and I know this is negotiation, is there a website in the CAO's office that says, "This is the city's position, this is your organization's position, if you change your position, this is what result will be"? I'm sure this, how informed are those who are affected by this?
Well, certainly, this report... Well, certainly, this report lays out some of those issues. And if anybody has any specific concerns, we could certainly meet with them. I'm meeting directly with representatives of the pensions board tomorrow. And so, and we talk on a regular basis with Lasers.
Would it make any sense to put it online, so people could go to that and try to get information?
We could commit to putting sort of a fact sheet.
A fact sheet, that's all, just a friendly suggestion.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That is our last speaker. We do have the committee report before us for a vote. Let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay. That is approved. All right. Next order of business, please. I mean, next, yeah, let's take the ordinances up. I know we have an excuse, Mr. Cardness has excused to leave at 12, so I want to make sure while we have 12 members, we can take those. So let's go ahead to the orders first.
That brings us to item number 10, called Special for Cards.
Okay. Our first speaker is Dr. Clyde Williams. On item number 10, he'll be followed by Arnold Sacks.
Short one, one minute. Dr. Clyde Williams, El Sereno. Taxing districts, business districts, a lot of districts. And we were quite interested in Government 101, as proposed by the council president, Mr. Garcetti. And we had actually started talking about City Hall 101. How do we find out about these things? By the way, there's no community impact statements on a lot of things here. And one of our concerns is that neighborhood councils don't get these things at all. So maybe the business districts, maybe the taxing districts, maybe the other districts should be reviewed by neighborhood councils appropriate to those areas, because I think we know more about it than a lot of you. Thank you very much. Reserve one minute.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Arnold Sacks, our next speaker.
Yes, thank you. Good morning again, Arnold Sacks. The Grand Avenue Project, the community taxing district for the Grand Avenue Project. Well, let's see. Would that include the museum, the Eli Broad Museum, or the parking garage that's going to be owned by the CRA? And/or the park that's going to be developed by the county board of, at the county property? What other property is being taxed here? Because there's no other building going on at the Grand Avenue Project. And is, there's not even any penalty fees being accessed or accumulated or collected because the Grand Avenue Project is so far behind in its time schedule? And if this is a district, what will happen at the stadium that's going to be built? Will that be a taxing district also? Thank you.
Thank you very much. That'll close our public comment. Anybody wishing to be heard on item 10? If not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. Next, we'll go forthwith without objection on that. The next ordinance, please.
That brings us to item 15, called Special for Cards.
Mr. Sacks, if you'd like to come forward again for item number 15.
Yes, thank you. Again, Arnold Sacks, another taxing, community taxing district. It mentions the Convention Center Hotel. Well, specifically, which Convention Center, which hotel is the Convention Center Hotel? Would that be the new Marriott? Would that be the condominiums at the Marriott? Would that be the hotel that was across the street from the Marriott? Another five new hotels that are supposedly planned as part of the stadium? Or the new hotel that's going to be built on Olympic Boulevard? Now, you're taxing, you're creating a taxing district, but you're waiving the 14% bed tax fee. So how much does it end up costing the city to collect these taxes when you're waiving the 14% bed tax fee for these new hotels? Can we get an answer on that? I guess not. Thank you.
Thank you. Any council members on item 15? If not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll as well and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
All right. Forthwith as well?
Sure.
Next item called Special, please.
Mr. President, that brings us back to item number eight, called Special for Council Member Carruthers.
All right, Mr. Carruthers, item number eight.
Thank you, Mr. President. The findings and conditions of approval have been updated by the planning department since the time of this committee hearing. So I'd ask that we adopt the modified conditions of approval attached to the council file as approved by the Plumb Committee at their June 28, 2011, meeting.
All righty. Let's go ahead with that then, and please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
We'll send that forthwith due to the time limit as well on that. Next item called Special, please.
That brings us to item 16, called Special for Cards.
All right, Mr. Parks, item number 16.
Doesn't take much. Your notes? Your notes?
Oh, sorry. We'll take the cards first, Mr., oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was Mr. Parks for cards. So Mr. Walsh, if you'll come forward first on item number 16.
100,000 successful server requests per month. Email us at HollywoodDems@gmail.com. Become a friend at Miki Jackson, M-I-K-I Jackson. This is the REAP. These are delinquent landlords, and we think that you should throw the book at them. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. We'll take a vote on the escrow count program for 108 East 8th Street. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. Next item.
That brings us to item 18, called Special for Cards.
Mr. Sacks, he waves it off. Any members wishing to be heard on 18? If not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll on 18 then and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please. We'll send forthwith without objection by two council members. Next item, 19, is called Special by Cards as well. Mr. Walsh, on item 19, if you'd like to come forward.
This concerns homelessness, and I'd just like to point out, we are, we're the only city in America that now charges people to go to homeless shelters. You actually have to pay. I wish that the people have, they've left from Thailand, because I think they're number two in homelessness. HollywoodHighlands.org, Bangkok homelessness.
That will close the public comments on item 19. If we can, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. And next is 23, also for Cards, Dr. Clyde Williams, Mr. Arnold Sacks, and Mr. Walsh.
Can I get two minutes? Yeah, okay. Dr. Clyde Williams, El Sereno, also LA 32 Neighborhood Council, DWP representative, has indicated before, "We need the ratepayers advocate in place and operational now." When is it going to come? Well, maybe this year, maybe next year, maybe never. We don't know. So we'd highly recommend that for this particular one, there may be an advancement needed. We need this ratepayers advocate in place as soon as possible, because we consider that we voted on Measure I, and we want the ratepayers advocate in place, operating and reviewing all rate increase, proposed rate increases before they are approved by the Board of Water and Power and by this council. So we're highly recommending advancement of the ratepayers advocate as soon as possible with adequate funding. So, thank you.
Mr. John Walsh.
We have been waiting for the ratepayer advocate. How many years now? Seven, eight, 12? This reminds me of a novel by, called Man in the Iron Mask. Remember, the king hid the man in the iron mask, well, until he was rescued. Wait a second. It's very easy to appoint. Our ratepayer is being hidden in a dungeon, man in the iron mask. But I'm going to make a suggestion now for the perfect person to bring all the factions in Los Angeles together as our rate advocate. I suggest that Craig Huey be made our, because everyone's going to hate him, everyone's going to attack him. Let's, let's let the Tea Party people come in here, and let's make Craig Huey the, our man in the iron mask and our ratepayer advocate. HollywoodHighlands.org, Janice Hahn, congratulations.
Mr. Sacks, please. One minute informs the clerk.
Thank you. I know. Thank you. The ratepayer advocate in this dog and pony show continues. If you follow the history, first, the mayor said it would be in the controller's office, then it was going to be in another office. It's right back in DWP control. This is just a shell game being played between the council, on one hand, or claiming to be on one hand, and the DWP. And either way, the public is going to end up paying. All this information should have been brought forward in the open and transparent manner that the council always operates in, before or during the time that the ratepayer advocate was being discussed to be put on the ballot. That's the time that this should have been done. Not four months later, with a six-month later, who knows when this is going to occur, but this is the normal operating procedure for the city council, leading from behind, only this time, it's way behind.
Thank you very much. That completes public comment. Ms. Perry, please.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chair, on June 29, the Energy and Environment Committee held a joint committee meeting with Rules and Elections chaired by Council President Garcetti. Now, the purpose of the joint committee was to receive communication from the city attorney and the ordinance relative to establishing the Citizens Committee to appoint the executive director of the Office of Public Accountability for the Department of Water and Power pursuant to the measure the voters passed in March. I'd like to ask Mr. Miller and Mr. Merkin if they might come up to the middle table. The other purpose of the meeting was to hear reports relative to the implementation of the charter amendment, the implementation of the Office of Public Accountability, and related matters. The recommendations that came out of the committee sought approval of the CLA/CAO report, which directed the CLA and the CAO and the city attorney to work, to work with an executive director, once one is chosen, to develop and report on the following OPA components: reporting requirements, the schedule thereto, consumer protection procedures, the ratepayer advocate position, and related duties, including the option for the executive director to assume the ratepayer advocate designation. That again is an option, and a request that the city attorney prepare and present an ordinance providing for the OPA budget. So I'd like for Mr. Miller and Mr. Merkin to just sum up what their next steps will be and the timeframe in which they believe they can achieve those goals.
Well, again, I think, as you indicated, the first step is to get the Citizens Commission in place and get the appointment of the executive director taken care of. And then our offices will be working with the executive director and obviously with the council in better defining the roles of all of the parties, the duties and responsibilities of the OPA, including the ratepayer advocate.
And would you tell everybody, just for the record, the deadline which everybody, the appointments need to be made for the Citizens Commission?
That deadline, I believe, is August 15, the appointments to the commission.
Mr. Merkin, is there anything you wanted to add?
We'll be working with CLA's office and the CAO's office on the issues you just mentioned. In addition, your report calls for the council to direct the preparation of the initial budgetary ordinance. And so that will be something we get on right away and develop and present to the council for its adoption.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you, Ms. Perry, for raising the question. Thank you for your joint leadership on this and the committee meeting moving this forward. I know Ms. Perry is going to meet that deadline. I'm going to meet that deadline. I spoke with the mayor about meeting that deadline. We have to make sure that we have the Citizens Committee in place because of the acceleration that the department has talked about for the rate increases that they're proposing. We have to make sure we have this backstop in place. I think it's been the position of both of us, and I think, maybe speaking for the entire council, that we can't take any action on a DWP rate plan until it is fully analyzed by ratepayer advocate. The voters of Los Angeles wanted this. It hasn't been 10 years, it's been actually a few years. Mr. Weisar's motion, I think, three years ago, the work that we've done diligently over the last year and a half, the community processes, and the way this passed every single council district in the city, launching the Office of Public Accountability must be top, top priority for the department. So the ratepayer advocate's office is about transparency, accountability, openness, and it does have robustness, not just on rate analysis. If people looked closely at what we said, contrary to some who have said that this is truthless, it not only has analysis of rates, it has operational and customer service powers. And appreciate that the enabling ordinance will be focusing on that as well as we look at that. But making sure that we have DWP's cooperation and involvement in this can ensure that the bureaucracy of getting this up and running happens quickly. So I think passing Measure I was just the first step, making sure that this is the right person and the right group of people, making sure it's the right structure, and that it has the right communication. Both of the public and this group of people will be critical to finishing the job. I think we've taken a lot of steps forward, but today, I urge your support to make sure that we get there on this important step. We get the Citizens Committee in place, we get somebody hired, and then we look at the expansion of the office into the other areas the voters voted for as well. Thank you.
No other members on the queue? Mr. Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Next item.
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
So ordered.
There are excuses on the desk.
Let me hear them.
Councilmember Rosendahl requests to be excused at 1:15 on July 22 for city business. That meets council policy.
1:10, I'll let them go, 1:10, 1:10, that's good.
Very good. Councilmember LeBange requests to be excused on September 30, October 4, October 5, and October 7 for city business. That meets council policy.
Mr. Zine approves it, thank you very much. Next.
The desk is clear.
Any announcements, members? Any announcements at this time? Mr. Cardness.
Oh, I have it. No, I just wanted to congratulate Janice Hahn now that the election's over. We're not electioneering here or anything like that. I just wanted to congratulate Janice Hahn, and I just wanted to also take the opportunity to give my condolences to the Hahn family and everybody who has known Janice and her mother and her family for so many years. It's a tragedy to, for her to lose her mother, yet at the same time, she's been a public servant herself, Janice Hahn has, for so many years. I just wanted to congratulate her, and it's a bittersweet moment for all of us, for us to share in that elation for Janice, yet at the same time, to send her our condolences. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. It was a wonderful evening for Ms. Hahn and her constituents of the new congressional district. Mr. Parks.
President, and just for the public, just to be aware of two events. The Fresh and Easy zoning administrative hearing will be held Tuesday, July 19, at 4:30 at the 8th District Constituent Center, 8475 South Vermont. And that deals with Fresh and Easy's effort to get a conditional use permit on sales of liquor. And then also, and our Van Ness Recreation Center will be holding their first family celebration Saturday, July 23, 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Van Ness Recreation Center, 5722 Second Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Any other announcements? No, any adjourned motions at this time? We have one. Would all please rise for adjourned motions?
Would all please rise for adjourned motions? All right, here we go, adjourned motions. Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I would like to adjourn in memory of Percy Covington. He was the late husband of Dorothy Covington, who was a member of the Park Advisory Board and president at Gilbert Lindsay Recreation Center. Mr. Covington was a member himself, and was actively involved in the community for over 30 years, and he mentored youth in Los Angeles and in Compton. He established the Pride of Santa Ana Scholarship and established a fund to support training young pilots at the Compton Airfield. While putting on a 4th of July program that involved all members of the community, including the homeless, he, along with his wife, were also, they were both instrumental in making the Park's annual Christmas party and toy giveaway a marvelous success. He gave of himself and his time willingly, and was dedicated to the community. He is survived by his wife, Dorothy, his four sons, Jerome, Timothy, Anthony, and Percy, and he will be sincerely missed.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Any other members? Seeing none, we remember all who went before us. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Council is adjourned. Thank you very much.